This conference will now be recorded.
One of my guys came in, they're like, "Oh." I'm like, "Yes, please." Because I haven't had a chance to breathe all day. It's chaos. She, she's coming in. Ah, too. We need a leaf blower. A what? You have a leaf blower? You need a pearl leaf blower? I have one. It's brand new. We bought it to blow out the UTV. It goes with it to fires because the ash that's in there doesn't come out. It says 614. 615! Alright, opening meeting for June 23rd. Alright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to do the introduction for the conditional use permit for the Madison Valley tradesman?
So anyway, the project is Madison Valley Tradesmen, Jerry and Logan Cooper. Have submitted a condition to this application to build a residential home next to existing shop. The site of the proposed project is translocated at Madison Avenue. Murdered by the addition to town hall. It's point 36 of November. That would indicate the intention is to build 2016, third floor, single family building. And zoning regulations allow the single family building on a condition of CC1. On this grid. The town, zoning laws allows services that are generally appropriate within a particular line of discipline, which may require construction and approval for the condition, for town officials to implement conditional needs, needs circumstances. Zoning regulations started in 2012 for conditional needs application getting required for 2022. The zoning laws shall comply with performance standards outlined in the MS Building Regulations 1145. Any lighting used in the building, any carpet structures or any other areas shall be arranged as to but lighting down 10 hours away from the torn offices. Lighting shall not exceed 20 feet of height of the tallest building. Screening if required in the C1 zoning. Appleton does not have plans for screening at this time. Their own shop is to the west of their residence, to the north of the residential building is the residential building. Madison Avenue is south of East, South of D3 Street. Local service and maintenance will be what, these are the following. Private trash disposal quarters will not be required for a single family building. Water and sewer infrastructure shall be started in accordance with town and MS Public Works Department's standards and requirements established in the title and MS condo. Now, the fantasy area will be supposed to be shrubbed and grass around the single family building. One's going to cover 5,000 square meters of the whole project. Parking will be in the code driveway access on D63. Highway is clear gated between students and residents. Setbacks in commercial industrial are 50 feet front and 25 side and rear. Minimum lot size 103. Appleton's property is point 36 of November. The full setbacks are 30 feet front, 207 side, and on the west empty on the left side of the building and 300 and rear. In conclusion, Appleton has located local use for potential new employees. They feel it's difficult to find a portable and durable housing in the area. Appleton has met the standard and serves on the north field of the original and performance standards on the northeast and outside of the property, or west central home, to the west central. The application is being persisted, it's down in the next.
Did you said screening is required in this area, but that's...
It's required in the commercial industrial zone. Most of the property refers to the night area is commercial. Commercial screening.
The 10 foot between your existing building and the house? Is that, is there a...
Well, it's or anything else. If nothing specific in there between any accessory structure or these others are unpopular with support. There's nothing specific to say in this.
Sure, and they own, guys own the entire, yeah, property out in this thing. Biggest thing is just trying to get a decent sized structure with...
Why it's so big?
It's...
2016, is that with the garage?
That's with the garage, the little space is what we... It isn't just so...
I missed the garage.
It's Larry Pye's house plan over here with the third bedroom. Like, because the office was trying to find someone there, probably going down with family. So we're just trying to find a way to get a third bedroom in there.
Okay, that makes sense. I missed the garage, Angel planned, so I was like, why it's so big?
38 feet from the street to the house. That's a little short.
It's a little short.
All of that last is short.
Right, because we matched the throne up to our existing shop. And then through the back where we park all of our trailers, so that offsets that there. It makes an equal difference. But they're all lined up with all their residential's going down Madison. So it's not projected out far to the existing structures.
They're bigger setbacks. What's in the commercial building?
Our office, storage, where we work on our stuff.
Okay.
Pre-built.
He knows where I was going. What's in it? So is there 10, is there 10 feet doable?
And open feet in the buildings. What?
Nothing.
Yeah, we're gonna use the personal trailers who would make buildings that are less... Yeah, I can probably DMV the buyer, so if it ever sells, it'll probably be one property anyway.
It's on one property now.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll go to public comments now that we've had an overview of it. Any public comment? Going once? Going twice? That's public comment? About, about this, about this item?
We're doing the traffic.
They're over there.
Yeah, we're on the site, it's just a more or less stored facility for us. More or less longer, and if you look at it, it's somebody that has a residential house with an oversized garage. I mean, it's a 1400 square foot shop. I think it's up there, in one of the three corners.
It should be on Madison and... Yeah.
So, maybe 6 feet.
Alright, last call for public comment. Alright, closing public comment, commissioners?
That's my only comment, Suzie, is that when you get these things and you know they're going to be 6 feet or anything with a third comment, but we can have them. Or, you have this 45 and 22?
Yeah.
Does that would be, I need to get her some plans and go.
You don't have to have your staff report and everything, but even if you have the plans, we can work this out.
Your, your landscape planner, you guys doing those three trees here?
It'll probably be more than that. I just didn't want money to play with, I put the money stuff. Because we're still going to use the back access to park trailers out of sight. Even clean up, that's between us and the auto lawn shop there. Right? So yeah, we do want to make it look nice in the area, and Paul has a very nice one across the corner from us. Parked in like the nicest part of town, which one of the corner nights. Sure.
And it's rock bed up there, so that'll be fun, trying to get...
Well, what I've suggested to people is basically just put like drip systems in, any vegetation you're trying to grow. Kentucky bluegrass belongs in Kentucky, so. Grow natural, something grows here that's drought tolerant, I guess, would be my suggestion.
Right.
Yeah, it's amazing how many gallons some of those trees actually take a day. Flat out and precious.
Yeah.
And then they die. Alright, any other?
Oh, I moved a conditional use application for Madison Valley Tradesmen to build a residential home to a next to existing shop on 740 Madison Avenue. Sorry.
Alright. Any other questions, concerns? The fence doesn't make sense. Okay. The fence, a fence, but I get it now that it's commercial fencing from residential, not the other way around. Are we ready to vote? Or you have that one? You have more questions?
It's not going for sale because our shop's there. It's, yeah. Yeah, we're trying to get help. We're a free man, people, it's killing us, so.
I think it's...
Right, $1,800 plugs going rate right now. We're just trying to buy someone that can afford it in here. We can't pay $80 an hour.
Alright, so we'll start with you.
I.
Alright, motion passes for the conditional use permit of the Madison Valley tradesman. Oh, I thought she was pissing me. Okay. That one's done. Alright, first reading of marijuana, marijuana ordinance 150. Does anybody need a copy of it? We have it? Public comment? Was there any submitted to town hall? No public comments submitted. Alright, public comment going twice? Three times? Alright, public comment closed. Commissioner?
It's about 10 PM to 5 AM?
Yes. Right, but then on D 365B 697? Oh, on our, on the 354. Our's lottery is just there.
May, may not be open to the public or require between 10 PM and 6 AM. Is that? And then...
No, honor. 364, it says no employees, or they can't be required to be there between 10 PM and 6 PM. What was it, where was the other spot?
Um, 365B. May not sell, give or transfer to hours 957. Just one of three can't be, I don't know.
So like they can't be there? Where, required to work? So that would give them an hour between closing, after closing that. Having to be gone, does that make sense? I, I never read it like that before, but I guess that would make sense that if they close at 9 PM.
Some state or somewhere else.
This is from Madison County.
Oh, yes. So it's like, so they could do that for hours.
Was there one more spot that it mentioned that, or was it just those two?
This is the second one.
Commissioner comment?
It's just that being mostly accessed, yeah, it's a town.
Yes.
Yes, and ours says, not a quote, but says, Carolina.
Yeah.
So we did the... And it's just, it's like, yeah, we had a call.
Yeah.
Yes. Which is in business and in zoning? So we'll have to adopt, take it out of...
This will go right into...
This will go right into business, but then we have to fix the language in zoning as well. For what kind of businesses can be where? Any other comment? Need motion?
Need a motion to approve marijuana ordinance 150.
Alright, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alright, first votes, you.
I.
Alright. Moving on to second reading of bulk water ordinance 151. The ability to define bulk water is basically that one. Do we have any public comment? We didn't have a definition for bulk water, so we thought we needed one. Because then it's easier to sell. Okay.
Well, we're also gonna...
That's later.
There's no reimbursement of taxes, it's just a definition of bulk water so that we can charge people that want to buy from us.
Yeah. Alright, so that was two on public comment. Last call for public comment on bulk water, ordinance 151. Alright, closing public comment. Commissioner, anything? Motion and second, any other discussion? Yep.
And that resolution was already done.
Yeah. And this is a separate one, the next one coming up. So, Brandy, count on the vote.
I.
Alright.
I meant two seconds, is that, sorry?
So that's the end of the public hearing portion, and then moving on to action items for tonight. This is not one of our regularly scheduled meetings. This is like our extra business meeting. So we're moving on to resolution 576, a resolution of service fees for utility counts, accounts. Brittany, you want to give a overview of this, I guess?
Uh, sure, yeah, we've been talking about this for months, and this is essentially adopting fees that the town currently does not, either does not charge for, or it's severely low charging for. So, as you can see on the resolution, insufficient funds, we currently have no charges, a check will return and people have money in their account. Late payment, late payment would increase from 2% flat to 2% plus $10 monthly. And then essentially the ones all below that all deal with Dylan one account. So fees to offset the cost of employees spending time to collect Dylan one utilities or shut off water, or the guy's going to put a note at someone's door, or that type of thing, so.
Alright. Thank you.
Yeah.
Public comment? Going once? Twice? Last call for public comment on resolution 5762022. Alright, that's closed, commissioner?
Nope, I did, they did sign by Nikki and Ginger, and then I just fill out the voting.
Okay.
On that, so, yeah, just to match, you know, minutes and...
And we're trying to make it easier.
No initials needed.
Later, so that you don't have to go back to the minutes, that's why we...
To find out who voted, how...
Which way, so. Streamlining, finding information later.
So I have a question, wait, I have to show somebody. Like if it's 12 minutes taking, turning on the six feet, probably going to fall in like that knowledge?
Nope, it's 30 days, or when?
Oh, okay.
Which is how it is now, it's...
Okay, now I see everything.
How long does the process take?
Immediate. A resolution is immediate.
Yes. Yeah. Two readings and then 30 days afterward.
It's been noticed, yeah. And, and it'll be, we don't have resolutions on the website yet, but yeah, it has been noted in the paper and, yeah. Sure. I have been letting folks know that are regularly late, that they're going to, you know, maybe want to pay because it's going to be $10 now. And they've all appreciated it. Oh, thank you.
And, um, a email, like for the note mail or email?
Um, you only get like 50 characters or something for the postcard, but, um, I...
It would, it would be changing every five seconds.
Yeah.
These are pretty standard fees. I mean, business fees, an insufficient fund, a return check, that's fairly standard.
Well, they're already at best, essentially.
Alright, I need a motion.
I motion to approve, um, I'm going to approve the resolution 576. Resolution for the 33rd, 34th, 35th.
I got it, there you go. Second. And Nikki seconded? Alright, and... Alright. Last action item of the night is a TND review of application from Willie's Distillery for tasting room and gift shop expansion. Suzie, you be up.
Well, Josh made this so easy for me, thank you, Josh. He's amazing.
Like you've done it.
And if anybody wants bigger ones, he even brought big, beautiful packets. We can share and pass them. We can share at tables. I guess we get to share. Alright, Suzie?
So Willie's Distillery has submitted an application to build a 426d addition. The site of the proposed project is 312308 East Main Street, that's two hours. On East Main Street, Town addition. The town has stated the intention is to build a 426d addition to the left side of the existing base term and gift shop. Both are allowed in a core residential CDR. Application is subject to the traditional neighborhood development. The intended purpose of the TND overlay is to provide flexibility in designing, designing the policies and overall intent of MS Conferent and Convent. The town has stated the intention is to build a 426d addition to the left side of the existing base term and gift shop. The additional map states during the project, the... The additional map states exterior construction of the listed facilities to facilitate remaining building associated hotel will be demolished prior to construction. Tightened after tax showing building unproven and imminent, fulfilling the setbacks. Private setbacks come from front fourteen, outside fifteen, near hundred, twenty, four, and eight, twenty-nine. Left side of thirty-five thousand, twenty-four, twenty-two, lot area coverage to forty-four percent, plans to be the new company, as most people expect. And to be carried, this is the first, twenty-two, so. Our people allow thirteen onsite harness slots, fourteen offsite, a lot of buildings, including on-site button. On-site harnessing will be asphalt paving and favorites, as well as be woven. No additional signage is included in the content, and we intend to show those in the beginning process. By Anne Main Street, left three to seven is provided by Northwood Energy, and nine is by Northwood Energy. You can align and show your range to reflect the weight and the tonnage of the building, and shall not detract from driving this building on street. Passing codes like, older is situated behind existing building, passing indicators divided by outsourced and the place, what it could mean. According to the applicant, project would not propose activities that would be sculpted up or particularly mattered. Applicant has stated both calls and requirements in the distillery, process, and storage that comply with state and harness. No additional storage, the plus that is application. Additional water and sewer line will be installed with the order based on how it works. The proposal is to ask that exterior construction of the facility, exterior construction between two plus eight wood, board and bath sliding as well as opposite metal sided, same from the west to build a roof, as well as being in the west, and all down the third floor. Willie's project includes all the standards in T and D overlay, including standard. Town and group's new projects are similar, same or similar as proposed by applicant, and it's T and D overlay, in accordance with the West End. So I embrace those expansively, along with additional Green Street, and positively include the overall street by moving that main school to main street, only one need to be moved up more.
So essentially where the silver's taken, where the parking, right now, but... I know, I'm taking more of a vertical.
So that actually widens up the driveway, the existing driveway, it's over there, it's not on the ground.
Your exit at all would be the house around, about how many?
Yeah, I think it should, I think it should be a nice project, starting towards the back, that's the illustrated, branded, if I had thought, that could be an idea. Based slightly, actually exterior, but she doesn't make it look like it's been there all along.
And then what's gonna be on the top, or is it?
Um, one foot hurdles could possibly be additional space for agents, still working through approvals of the state and engineers, and code may not allow for that. At which point, uh, we would...
What about going crowbar through the property?
Correct, we need it. Also assured, so I didn't, so I didn't have the code, because it requires a public elevator.
For the soundings.
Yeah, for media compliance, then, no, it's not gonna be, I'm just saying, we're not putting that.
Yeah.
I don't think it will be required, because it's an addition, as opposed to new construction.
Yeah.
However, that all works down with occupancy, uh, the state plan motion. So, you can pump us and say, you can have twenty-five people up there, but to have those twenty-five people up there, and you have a balcony, you have steps over that.
And a second, yeah.
At which point, if it gets complicated enough, it won't be for the public, there'll be additional office spaces.
So the bathrooms on the first floor and second?
Okay.
Oh, you're gonna do up and down, so the offices that, potentially, if you go up there?
Yeah, that's good. Fifty, you know, fifty, um, eating space, fifty, um, fence space, um, you might really even, the code, the BDA, the apartments, make sure that we're able to do that. Final doing, sort of, scoring them out of what, but you can't have this part of space. You always be specific, additional office space, um, additional meeting space, um, that's what we do sometimes.
And then you're gonna open up the basement room, make it this bigger, most likely it opens.
Yeah, absolutely, pretty much, most of that left wall will get blown out. Um, at least the area that's hopefully bigger, certainly.
Yeah.
You know, the marginal structure, you know, that's pretty simple, um, you know, just put it, yeah, should we fly open, um, what am I, what's it?
How much support do you think it'll have?
Uh, it's eighteen hundred for, eighteen hundred for floors, thirty-eight hundred for floors, even that, bathrooms and catapults and staircases, and, and, and eighteen hundred for floor. There'd be thirty-six hundred for it.
And can they park it and come into patio?
That's a good question. Um, have we gotten that far, but certain possible, I guess it's probably not, because if you break that, I was only... Somebody will come up there and actually, you know, help, enjoy the patio. And I don't think we access the basement door, so, and that in, um, so, what, I'm asking you, you know?
Do you need what the event, uh?
Yeah, with, yeah. The effects are on patio, I guess it's just gonna be doing the fence, pretty much across both of these areas. Obviously, the patio will have to be fenced in because of the alcohol. I guess if we're gonna put a fence across here, and the fence across this property, the sidewalk for the new warehouse having the port. So a lot of fence up the sidewalk. And we don't want people, you know, get back there, especially, back there, propane exit, so, and then putting a portable sign, and then sleeping back there, you know?
Probably do it on the part of the park. Are you gonna try to...
The line, the time being, however, we did all about, and think we could, you know? Asphalt were coming, pretty, uh, as we, with this motion, I love, yeah, I had phase one with the, the warehouse. One block, they used to, this is phase two, of the, we saw the drop, as we started to build, the asphalt, uh, we're on the drop, and just now. Did the sidewalk, and we had another big, and four, um, it doesn't, it didn't, like, that, so. I think it'd be easier if that lines for people to...
All right, okay.
Maximize your space.
Yeah, absolutely, they're a little too big here, literally all that out there, the pressure quite in, and it should work. We have, we have twenty-five wide, or twenty-wide, in order to get the proper amount of park, that's something I consider. If you don't want your pressure, you're, you're, hours, and, 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 so, that's what we want on the bench, and that's our place.
Josh, on the, on the west side of the property, you have what looks like a boulevard, I guess, with that further to the west of that, where those three trees are at? Is that gonna be Third Street, or Third Street on the other side of that?
We have the park lot, that, 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 right?
Right.
The old street bar is, I think that's really supposed to be a fact.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, our idea is that, you know, at some point, that had, had your own, clean, sobered it properly, more hard, holding up, there's dead trees there, full on trash, weeds, back laundry. I believe that would fall with, so, um, you know, so, it's definitely something we're looking to clean up. I don't know, let's see, let's go, because that place is, you know, heavily, up there, involved, and the project's done, because, um, it's, um, it's, um, on it.
We haven't pointed, made, one, this way.
Yeah, I mean, that's harmless things, and, and that.
That parking lot will be yours, you could put for Willie's.
Yeah, that's what you can, um, you own a property across the street, actually pay a whole much, if you clean it, and all, yeah, it comes out. Mostly, mostly our northeast part there, most of the time, but we do have, play a few, uh, what is it now, RVs, trailers, and dirt lights, and all kinds of stuff, and that, and, and most of the parking lot is full of people, spread, which is, uh, it's, it's, all that, we don't understand, it's, uh, we allow, you know, people that are coming down, whether they're utilizing buildings or not, part of their, or corporate, asshole, right, ever to, just, box and pull the part, and, 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 a whole lot. Uh, but other than that, it's only for the public, and we'll have some, as I was saying, it's just for the, the, uh, this parking lot, sure, the last seven is essentially, uh, the, the, uh, part. And we're, that, we're, we're not, we're not, that's, like...
Get back here and have your two drinks.
Yeah, it's not a good look, anyway, you're already, this is, it's, it's, you're up down, I, I, you know, possibly.
Any, any concerns with drainage?
Uh, no, quite honestly, um, in that, the brain, uh, we, uh, actually had some fresh things installed. And the warehouses, so, my downstouts come, come down, and it's, it's, uh, body by body, and fell down, the water, they go back, they're, they're, I think, you know, that is, I'm, I'm better than I have been. Basically, not raining this time, that thing is, um, sure. We have, no, no releases, we have, one below spot where the propane has, was solid, the ground, it's, it's, back there, we had, those spots, and, and, that's, and all now. So far, it's, it's, it's working, and we do have, for them, you know, additional fresh drains, but if they slide, they're, they're, yeah, I mean, there's, it's, pretty much all about the water, and the roads, but often, pretty much, it's almost in the middle, in the, in the, um, sometimes, often, the, the rear of the, um, warehouse, the album, um, so, 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 the, um,
Any other questions?
So you can still enter the, the, from the initial building and the addition?
Yes.